Okay. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section ten, public hearing will be held on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the Mendon Town Hall at six P M. For variance regarding seven Nipmuck Drive. The petitioner seeks relief from the front yard setback from fifty feet to four feet on the side of the property that abuts an undeveloped portion of Thornton Street. Who is here to represent the applicant? Please come up, have a seat.
Good evening. Amanda Cavallieri with Gary Earnham. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Outstanding Bath Finishers. And if I may share my screen. I think I can do it, hold on. Let's see. There we go.
Okay, yours.
All right. I'm gonna start off here. So the applicant is currently looking to purchase seven Nipmuck Drive, which is this parcel right here. It's in between Oxbridge Road and Nipmuck Drive. And the applicant is, it has Mass DOT Highway to the north of it. It has an undeveloped Thornton Street to the west and to the south is Nipmuck Drive. Back in around the early nineteen hundreds, Mass DOT had rerouted Route sixteen, which was Nipmuck Drive, and brought it out to the front, which ended up discontinuing Thornton Street. And on behalf of the applicant, we're here today looking for a variance, depending on how the board so chooses to view Thornton Street. Right now, it's undeveloped and it appears in nineteen eighty-nine. It was discontinued by the town. And there is no development that's currently on that. So we're requesting relief. We have, this is a proposed layout. We understand we have to go to a site plan review as well as a mass DOT for a carb cut, but without the variance, we're unable to pursue the first building on the west side of the property. So we'd requested a front yard setback of allowing four feet for a relief of forty-six feet if we observe the front yard setback. And where the town has discontinued this and the rights are split between the property to the west of Thornton Street and our property to the east, we would go to the center line. And that would change over to a side yard setback, which is twenty feet. And we can observe the center line of Thornton Street or we can maintain our existing property line. And either way, we would need relief. It does, it's variable width, just about thirty-two feet. So if we use our side property line as the center line of Thornton Street, we're just at about twenty feet. So we would just meet that setback with this rear corner. So either way, we would need relief from the zoning board of appeals to allow us to encroach with end of the, the front or the side yard setback.
That's all.
So they, there's a zoning board of appeals decision. I don't, I think it was in your packet that the general business was encompassed the entire property. It was, it's been changed over back in the day. So that's already been, yep.
Establish the, the rights to that banned road, the half ways.
That's something that I believe, I don't know if the attorney is aware, if the rights have been obtained. I know it's been discontinued, but I don't know if it's been conveyed in the, I don't believe it's been conveyed in the deeds.
It hasn't been banned, like banned and then legally, legally banned, right? Like.
Right, it's been discontinued, but yes.
So the rights are automatic.
To the center of the line of the road, yes.
Essentially, meet the side yard requirements. I'm showing twenty, twenty feet, nine inches.
Yeah, we're to the center line of the road. So we're, we're right there. And we can come back once the design is more finalized, if needed, if we are closer than that twenty feet.
Yeah, it's mine about the road. That was, I was giving my question, no worries. What's gonna be the use of the building?
This is outstanding Bath Finishers is hoping to relocate and utilize that as part of their business.
Okay.
Showroom and warehouse, yes.
Plan is not in front of planning board yet.
Nope. Well, we were waiting to determine if the variance was going to be granted. That would have us reevaluate if we were unable to obtain a variance, if we needed to remain fifty feet off of the front yard. And it wasn't until after it was filed that we found out it was discontinued.
The third road, though, is, that, that piece of roadway that's. The corner? Yeah. Question there?
No, no, I just, I just visualize in my head.
Oh, yeah.
Like the area of the.
Question for anyone? No further on my. Anyone from the audience here to, to ask questions regarding this? Come on up and identify yourself, please.
Sandra Taft, eighty-nine Oxbridge Road, which is across the street from seven Nipmuck. I'm on the Route sixteen side.
Sandra, speak at the Michael.
I'm sure I'm loud enough if you ask my husband. So I understand, according to your diagram, you're looking for a variance. Will you be utilizing the Thornton Street or the seven Nipmuck Drive side for entrances and exits?
So the way the drawing right now is proposed, and this is the way we're intending it, is you'll access both from Oxbridge Road and be able to exit onto Nipmuck Drive if needed.
So you won't be utilizing the Thornton Street? You'll be utilizing the area that they've designated?
Correct. Thornton Street will not be used as a road. So the gray areas that you see in the center of these two buildings, that's what's proposed to be pavement.
And are there going to be big trucks? Is this like, this is a warehouse?
It's a showroom and warehousing for materials. They have, if I'm correct, you have vans and small box trucks, milk deliveries.
Workers, they tend to use the back door for all the work. Again, they're just coming for the front door. You're very concerned about the looks, having a very nice landscape. We're going to concede new grounds.
Is there any way that, that trees can be put? I mean, as of right now, that dirt, the entrance and exit for Route sixteen faces my living room. And I mean, that's where I sit and watch T V and try and relax. And if there's trucks coming in and out.
So right now, it's basically, it's really available right now?
Correct.
Because it's gonna be moved, isn't it? The driveway, we have to move the D O T to move the entrance a little bit?
Yes. So we need to go through the mass DOT process for the carb cut. And as part of that, we do have to do screening, but we also have to maintain site distance. So we're, depending on the site distance in that area, once we get again into the design a little bit further, we can't block, we can't block the, the view from turning in and out of that parking lot. But we can certainly look into putting some screening trees or some sort of screening up front.
Okay.
Also, it's important to note that if we grant this variance, there'll be a pretty extensive planning and review process with the planning board. Playboard, right, through the.
Design.
I'll be at that one too, yep.
I'll have an opportunity to really dig into that site distance. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, I understand, yeah. You're just looking for zoning at this point and then, you know, the next steps. But I was just wondering, you know, if you're going for this variance, you know, is it because you're gonna be utilizing both sides, the seven Nipmuck side and the Route sixteen side? Or are you gonna utilize Thornton Street? So those.
The variance that we're requesting that's in front of the board this evening is just a setback to the side yard for the building.
For that corner.
For this corner.
That back corner. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any intent to extinguish, right, to extinguish Thornton Street legally?
That's more of a legal question.
I thought there was an answer. Dylan said.
It's been discontinued.
Discontinued.
Discontinued, right, okay. You mean like physically.
Legally extinguish it so that it.
So then it's area that gets added to.
Because right now, there are rights to the adjacent property that survive.
Yes.
So it could be used as a road technically. Or right of way, if you will, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Be a good idea.
Yeah, we can, we can work with the attorneys on that one.
Because there's only one, well, two people that would have rights to it in this case.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
So it's easier process. And it takes time to do that, so. Is there a use, proposed use for the other building?
I don't believe it this time. Do you have anything for that one?
Yeah, we're expanding company. I mean, we have plenty guys right now and we say, come in, they, they load up their equipment and when they go. So they don't stay there all day, they're not gonna be traffic. So once they load up their equipment, they're not gonna come back in two minutes, stay to load up, that's it. But then we have our supplies, which, you know. Any other questions from the audience? Probably, yeah.
Actually, I have one with me.
Okay.
Jamesport fourteen Park Street. I was just, just concerned about the, the distance. I'm the owner of the property next to it. And just concerned about the distance of the building and how will that affect what I'm doing on my property?
Which parcel are you?
To the left.
This parcel?
Yeah.
Okay. So if the variance is granted, again, the only thing that we're looking for is a side yard setback. So originally, we thought it was a front yard setback, which would be fifty feet. But because Thornton Street's discontinued, it's now a side yard setback of twenty feet. So to the center line of Thornton Street. So if rights get extinguished and then it gets the, the split between the two gets divided between the parcels, it's now just a side yard setback. So it gains a little bit extra square footage to the property.
So this means because there's no spot zoning, that my property will also have the same, correct?
Same, you have the same rights currently.
Yeah.
Yes.
To that.
Okay.
And might want to work together to extinguish the road so that those rights are memorialized in your deed.
Okay.
And I can get your information after the meeting and we can get you in touch with the attorneys if needed.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want, I just want to make sure it doesn't encroach on what my plans are and the, the depths.
Doesn't appear to, it wouldn't affect. Yeah, you're doing.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Any other questions?
Question? Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this variance.
We got to switch, close the hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion, close the hearing. Second, second.
So move?
I. I. I'll make a motion to approve the variance. The reason that it is the hardship being the unique shape of the property and circumstances surrounding the extinguished road next to it.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, made the motion.
Second, second. Yep, call in favor?
Great.
Motion carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just follow up with Dylan on the public board. Thank you, Amanda. In accordance with N G L, Chapter forty A, Section fifteen, public hearing will be held on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the Mendon Town Hall, six P M. For appeal of the building commissioner's decision regarding eleven Colonial Drive. The petitioner is appealing the denial of the building for, for an in-law. Just here to represent the commissioners.
How's it going?
Good, you?
My name's Tim Peppin, this is my wife Spencer. With homeowners. It's my father-in-law Ted.
I could just preface the meeting a little bit, just to maybe just set the stage here. It's my understanding that a variance is kind of the appropriate steps to seek here. Not sure if you're aware of that or. May want to, you know, we could definitely hear the matter.
Yeah.
I'm not optimistic about the success of it on your behalf, just upfront. But if you were to withdraw your appeal tonight, and you don't have to, but I think it's, might be a good idea, and seek a variance, I think it'd be a much more favorable route for you. Would you agree?
Yeah, I would agree, yeah.
Okay.
We could.
What, what would be the variance that we would seek?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, so we're just suggesting that they may want to withdraw their, their appeal and seek a variance for this in-law apartment. So the variance would be a use variance for in-law accessory use.
Grant experiences? Do we grant use experiences? I don't believe we.
I mean, the use of the property is still going to be a single-family house.
I don't think it'd be used there, it'd be a variance. Yeah.
Just a regular straight variance?
Straight variance, yeah.
So what do we, what, variance for what?
That piece should be adjusted.
Because it's.
I don't think we could change the use of a parcel. As like a variance, because that's what we'd be doing, right? You can allow.
A little bit, it's a single-family home now, right?
Yes, a single-family and it.
Make a two-family out of it?
No. It's, it's going to remain.
We're trying to add an A, you're trying to add an A D U, essentially.
It's an in-law.
We're trying to add an in-law.
Accessory, right?
Only for immediate family.
Increasing the size of the footprint of the house.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Increasing the size, the footprint of the house.
That's correct.
Foundation.
So if you're not too comfortable with that process.
But I, I don't think our bylaw gives us the option to give a variance for, because I think the Mass General Law states we have to explicitly mention it in our zone, in our bylaw that the zoning board can grant these variances. I don't think ours does. That's a.
Are you sure on that, Tom?
I'm, I'm positive.
So that was sort of my question too, and I was search, searching through all the bylaws.
I'm looking it up right now at this, too. Okay. That was my, that was my understanding. If I am understanding wrong, I, I overland.
So under forty.
That'd be, I think forty A.
Yeah, forty A.
I could see going for variance if we were trying to change it to a two-family for some reason, which we're not trying to do.
The footprint is gonna be, it'll all be within the legal limits of the site, site, yeah, setbacks.
That's correct. We're, we're retaining all setbacks. We're not increasing the non-conformity of the property. We're not exceeding thirty-five feet tall and no greater than thirty-five percent of the property is. So it, we're, we're still within all of that for a single family.
So I, I just, Mass General Law, forty A, Section ten. Except where local ordinances or bylaws shall expressly permit variances for use. No variance may authorize a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the district in which the land or structure is located. And I don't think our bylaws give up this board the ability to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so our intent of use will not be derogating in any way to the zoning regulations.
What was that?
If I can, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I think the mending zone by law does allow for a use variance, but that really wouldn't be the topic of tonight's. I mean, that's not what's before your board. Tonight, what's before your board, I, I think, is that I've deter, I've, I've made the determination that what they've applied for, it does consist of a two-family, creating a two-family dwelling as defined by the building code. And the appeal, an appeal to the, a decision based on the building code should be brought to the building code appeals board, not to the local zoning board. The only reason that zoning bleeds into it is that there's dimensional regulations for what is proposed as a two-family dwelling. So I think that would be their course of appeal. They don't, they don't believe it constitutes a two-family dwelling, but that's been my determination and the way to appeal that would be to the, to the, you know, the state building code appeal board. With that said, I had advised them numerous times that what they're creating, in my judgment, is a two-family house. They could apply for a dimensional variance to allow the two-family house. They don't have adequate, they don't have the required frontage, they don't have the required area. They could have applied to this board to, for a variance from those two-dimensional requirements and, and constructed what they were proposing. Alternately, you know, an in-law is not defined in the zoning by law or in the building code. We all have our own inherent ideas of what it constitutes, but it also doesn't, what they're proposing isn't an accessory dwelling unit. By what the state's proposing, it's, it's much larger than what the state's considering, but that's what the state's considering hasn't, hasn't been promulgated yet and probably won't.
Talk a little louder, I can hear anything say.
Yeah.
Not without, not without screaming, but scream if this is any better.
It's work.
You want to get closer?
But I, I think the path to get there is just to apply for that variance because what they've proposed is a two-family house. A two-family house is allowed. And if they want to appeal the fact that it's a two-family, it should have gone to the B B R S or the B O, B C A B, Building Code Appeal Board.
So, so we've been very explicit this whole time that we're not applying for a two-family house. And this doesn't in some way make it a two-family house. You said it's much larger. There's no size restriction as to how big an addition can be. There's, the fact is, is there's seventy-two in-law units in Mendon, all over town. Some of them are much larger than the one we're proposing. Some of them are two stories in height. Some of them have full kitchens, some of them are detached from the house. There's plenty of precedent here. And there's no specific bylaws in Mendon that state what a two-family should be or what an in-law should be or whether or not you can have an in-law or not. It's just a single-family house. We're, we're proposing no change in zoning. And we even had our architect write up a letter stating that there's no proposed change. And it, and it was included in our package. So if my, my challenge to you would be, what, when does an in-law unit become a two-family? What specific things make it a two-family?
I'll be, I'll be glad to answer those questions, not that the board has asked. Two-family dwelling is defined in the state building code, and I have cited that. What they've proposed, in my determination, creates a two-family dwelling, has nothing to do with the size.
What, what does create, what thing?
Definition of a two-family, the definition of a dwelling unit, it was in the denial.
So how come all these in-laws in Mendon?
I don't know what you're calling an in-law, but I didn't permit those. I did explain that certain aspects of what you're trying to achieve could be fit within a single-family dwelling. What you proposed is simply, in my opinion, a two-family dwelling. And if you want to appeal that, you should be appealing that to the state as far, under the building code.
Well, the basis of your denial is what we're appealing. We're appealing your denial and you're, we believe that what you're saying isn't correct. For one of the.
Appealing it to the wrong board.
I mean.
It's gonna be completely dependent on our home, though. It's good, we're opening a wall to have it completely connected. It's gonna be connected to our electricity, our septic, everything. So it's not a two-family home, it's a one-family home.
It is by definition.
No, one of the definitions is it needs separate provisions for cooking. There's no stove. How would it cook? There's no stove.
It doesn't say it needs a stove.
It says it needs separate provisions for cooking.
This isn't my hearing, but I believe you should be appealing to the, to the state B C A B. I don't think that's under the purview of this board, but I'll let them decide. If we get past everything else, the.
I mean, I didn't.
The crux of it is that I determined it to be a two-family dwelling. Whether this board agrees or not, you're appealing it to the wrong board. Ultimately, you could have been asking this board for certain concessions. And when you, when you mention in-law, in-law is not defined. In-law is not provided for in the zoning by law. And anything that's not expressly allowed is prohibited.
No, 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 additions are permitted by right.
Not the addition.
The addition that we're proposing is permitted by right.
If you took the footprint and made one giant family room, you would have had a building permit. It's not what you're creating. I didn't watch her.
That's an opinion.
That's right, that's my opinion and you.
So this whole denial is based on your opinion?
No, it's based on a definition.
But the definition includes separate provisions for cooking.
Yes. What exactly is a provision for cooking? There's more than just a stove. You have a full kitchen.
How are they gonna cook? It's not a full kitchen.
Well, then let the building code, let the building code appeals board tell me that. And if they go with it, that is absolutely fine.
That's, that's, so you're here to appeal the building commissioner's decision. We've heard from the building commissioner. So I'm gonna ask the board their thoughts on this.
I mean, I didn't see anyone like this. I don't know, say, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry.
A little unique, two-family or in-law.
Yeah.
How many square feet are we adding on?
It's about seventeen hundred. Well, the, the house three up from us has a large addition. A large in-law.
This will also look like one house, completely unison from the front.
Aren't you having it go all the way back?
We're having it having the front. So it kind of slinks up for a little more.
Okay, yes, it's definitely a unique one. My, my thought, just having, after hearing, you know, both parties speak, it's, I haven't heard much zoning. It's been more or less a debate over the C M R, building code regulations. And I think to the building inspector's point that.
And I think to the building, uh, inspector's point that this might not be the correct forum for this discussion. Uh, here tonight, I think it might be better offset with the state building appeals. It is again, if it's, you know, this is, I understand, you know, the frustration is a unique situation, but again, you know, I haven't heard much zoning. It's been more or less debate over the definitions of the building code. And this is not the proper forum for a debate or purview. It's a bit outside our purview as well. So what I don't want to do is make a decision or rule on something that's outside of our purview. Uh, it would be a detriment to all sides if we did that.
We usually rule dimensional. Question.
Exactly.
Square footage or frontage, something like that.
The, the problem, I guess. The problem, I guess, is we don't know where to go. We don't.
We haven't gotten.
We, we haven't gotten any answers like this.
Nope.
I don't think we can solve the problems.
No, God.
They expect.
But I, I'd just like to make a couple of more further points if I can. Um, on numerous occasions, I did guide them that they could apply for what I've already said, a variance from the dimensional record restrictions or requirements, regulations. Or what I believe is allowed is a use variance and that's immaterial at this point in time, but I did offer them several ways to try and get approved what they're trying to do. And it just, whether or not it's a two family house from their own, their own plans that they submitted. Uh, and from memory, when they first applied, they stated it was going to be a two family house. And that would be in our, our software even with edits, but what, what this proposed addition includes is seventeen hundred and sixty eight square feet with a separate basement and foundation, a family room. This is based on their plans that they submitted. A family room, a kitchen, a dining room area, open concept to the kitchen. Covered rear porch with access only from the new unit, an office, a half bathroom, uh, a mast, where's, I lost on the other page, a master bedroom, a master bathroom, two master walk-in closets, separate basement space from the existing unit, a lounge in the basement, a storage room in the basement, a workshop, a cold storage room and an unfinished basement. And again, kitchen was highlighted. Not highlighted, but I'm highlighting the kitchen was in there.
Again, this is, you know, debating over, you know, semantics with the building code. John, would you be able to give them, I, I know you have provided, but would you be able to provide specific info how to appeal to the state building, you know, commission that you mentioned? How to, you know, make that specific appeal? If you have that information, could you get that to them tonight or, you know, sometime this week? So at least, you know, they have that information and then, because again, this is not, it to me is just, just not seem to be the right venue for that. I, I want to make sure that I, you know, what we're doing tonight isn't going to be a detriment one way or the other. And that we're making, you know, we're calling the balls to strike because we see them in our proper venue. And this does not, this is, I hate punting my issue like this, but I just don't think this is within our purview. But I also want to make sure that this isn't a roadblock either, that you're able to, you know, go in front of the proper your authorities and have your day and make the argument one way or the other.
So, so what would we be appealing then?
Under, under the path you're going, you want to appeal my decision that, that you're constructing, you're creating a two family dwelling. But ultimately, I think there's a different path for you to get approval for what you want, because if the state upholds my decision, then you're, you're still at square one.
Okay. So how do we get to a point where we can create an addition to our house?
You would, I, you would apply for a variance, either dimensional variance for a two family. I'll look further into the, the variance.
We don't want to create a two family house.
But that's what you, in, in my opinion, it's just my opinion, my official, you know, uh, that's what you've proposed on paper.
Again, though, there's seventy two of these in town. How, we've looked at many of them. There's one, three houses up from us. There, some of them are larger. Some of them have stoves. Some of them have separate entrances. How, how were those allowed in this visit?
They weren't allowed by me. So there is a statute of limitations if somebody issued that in error.
So you're saying that there were seventy two errors?
I don't know. You, we'd have to look at each one case by case.
We have, we got a printout of them. We drove around, we'll look.
At the properties and I don't know where you get this information. I know from the assessor, I don't know what they use to call something an in-law, because as I told you, the term in-law apartment, in-law suite does not exist in the building code or in the zoning by law.
So we can't do an in-law then?
Think what he's saying is that term legally doesn't exist in our zoning nor the building code. We understand that it's a recognized term that people talk about and throw around, but it's legally doesn't. No basis for it. So to say it's an in-law apartment, it's fine, but it doesn't have any standing in the codes.
So what should we call it?
Uh, it's suggesting it's a two family the way it's designed. And especially, and I think, what do you read? There's quite a few points there. So in this, uh, excuse me, I'll get you a second. So in this, uh, May fourteenth letter.
Say it, Ted.
Uh, you were advised, you had two to pursue. Uh, one of it was through the zoning, if you thought it was a zoning issue or through the state building commission, if it's a state, the building code issue. Uh, do you have that document?
No, I, I don't.
Don't have the, did you receive it?
I, I have no idea. I, I didn't follow that. I'm sorry.
On May fourteenth of this year.
Yeah.
The building commissioner issued a notice of denial to you.
Yes.
Okay, you have that done?
Yeah.
And have you seen, you know, the suggestions at the end of the document?
I did. But we, we saw this as our first path. I mean.
Okay. So what we're saying is we take this through the board, we're, we're going to suggest that, you know, we, I'm not so sure it's, it's going to go in, in your direction, but we can, we can vote on it. Uh, and the building commissioner is advising you that it's more, it's much more a building code issue as he suggested in the first book of his letter. Building Commissioner's Office. Pretty highly of his decision. And so I can't imagine the building commissioner would think differently, but.
Right. I agree.
Your right to appeal.
So, so we obviously can't get that appeal. Like that's not going to work. And if we're, we're not going to try to go to make our house a two family. That's not in keeping with our neighborhood at all. We don't, and we don't want that. We want this, this is a generational living. This is immediate family only. So.
I think you may address the design elements that are in question here.
Can I, can I, can I speak to this? I don't, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's the building commissioner's position or place to guide you. You have an architect, right? As the stamped architect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who was in town and was guiding us through this process with the bylaws we have. So feel a little frightened.
Scene into this whole thing. So I, I'm the father of this girl. I'm Ted Steves. That's my wife. We live on Blackstone Street. I, I'm, I'm the tree warden in town and I want to stay in Mendon. I just retired and we want to live with my daughter and son-in-law who graciously invited us into their home. We're not looking for a two family home, but my wife and I are just young enough where we need our own space. So we looked into adding on to their house. And we've paid a lot of money for an architect to make a beautiful design that we could, we could age out with our two, our, our daughter and herself, both nurses, by the way, because we're going to be aging and we want to stay in town. I want to remain the tree warden in town and I want to live in my community. And I can't live on Blackstone Street in this big house, my wife and I. It's too much. So we started this process back in October and we reached out to the building inspector and we looked, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I appreciate that story. I know where it's going. I'm just not sure it's germane. Here, sorry to cut you off. Uh, I, again, I think it's, if we could, the board can speak to this.
All I'm saying is we looked for guidance from the town from day one and we're not getting any. Just tell us what board we need to go to. The state?
That's the guy right there.
Well, he's denied it. He's denied us. That's why we.
It's the first time we've talked to him in person.
He gave you a, a, a document that outlined very clearly the elements that he is saying, uh, convert us to a two family application. Is that?
Yeah.
Maybe your architect needs to kind of revisit those items and, and if do something with the design, uh, you know, I, I'm not a building code expert.
Is it that it has a separate basement?
It does a whole list of items. It's not just one.
It's, it's, it's the entire package that you've put together. I think you should work with an attorney that has some experience in zoning. It's, in order to move forward. Your architect wrote a zoning letter. I mean, an architect is notably not a zoning expert. Your architect didn't write anything about the use within the context of the building code.
He did sign a document.
That's, I mean, it's, it's your choice on which avenue you want to pursue. If, if you go to the state and the state says, John, they're right, that's not a two family, then I issue you the, the permit for the addition. If they say it is a two family, the denial is maintained. I mean, that's why I think you need a, a zoning attorney that would help get you there because you keep saying it's not a two family, but it is a two family to, to the average person. By definition in the, in the building code, you have two things that live completely separate. The utilities come from one, but it's not, it's not with, it's, it's just not some kind of a little accessory suite that you go through your kitchen into, into their living room and bedroom or something. It's
So it's the size.
Not the size.
So the size is fine, the way it is, size.
It's not the size.
We need to know like the exact things and then we can have the architect change it.
Adjust it. I just, we really have to be a teller.
You know. So it's. I live next door to them.
It's, it's, it's how the aspects.
How many feet they have to be away from me.
Definition of a dwelling unit. That's something we could do with.
So if we took the kitchen out, it would be fine.
So if that passes and they start building and it is close to my house.
We just, it's possible as a fortune.
Setbacks have all been.
Okay. And how come you guys like don't have stakes out or anything to tell me where your property is compared to mine?
So no, we.
I think, but you had a land surveyor come. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the stakes are in the ground. They sprayed them.
The only thing that I saw was a thing.
No, I just want to know like
Yeah. So.
Regular rules.
Sure. If, if they get to the point of getting a permit, they'll, they'll have to stake it out, uh, and all that stuff. So I think.
So that comes after.
Yeah, it comes way after getting this. So what?
Sounds like you were, you guys were discussing with him, will we make the application?
Approved.
Approved. So it's indication you want to. Do we either want, do you want to draw this or would you like to?
Yeah, we need to.
Possibly continue to another day.
I mean, I, I guess, yeah.
Protect, look at the plan. I need to communicate with John.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we withdraw it, right? Or, because it doesn't sound like it's going to be approved in this venue anyway.
It does not, you can't.
Or you can.
We, we don't, we're just, we're here to either uphold or overturn the decision and we don't believe it's in our purview to to overturn it in regards to the the issues that are brought up. So there's a, a pretty detailed list that I think. You know, you put a lot of time into this document. It seems like someone that is not, probably not you, like a, a code, code official should be, you know, going through this and addressing these concerns one-on-one. The building official or, you know, and, and if you know, doing it as a layperson, you may just be missing a few of the key steps and
Okay.
Uh, my opinion, you know. And it seems like the commissioner's here to work, he doesn't. You know, I read the document. It seemed like he was M I A, but. Yeah.
So now, yeah.
So, uh.
All right. We appreciate your time.
So would you like to withdraw your, uh?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for coming.
I would like to be so many, I have to be in front of the, um, resolution for. Or like how that we're not here to prevent you putting an in-law permit on. We just want to make sure that loads is behind, uh, your addition. It's not impacting. On this, it's pretty significant limitation.
Mm hmm.
Um, how close is that? I don't know.
It's ten feet. Yeah, it's a ten feet.
Yeah, I would suggest that you, you know, get with your neighbors well in advance of the next steps and just address some of their concerns informally.
Not yet.
After all the other construction you've done, it's like.
Yeah, not yet, because we don't have any approvals.
So thank you for coming. Thank you. Good luck. We're not.
They're not approved.
You're not hearing, having here.
Yeah, I'm going to motion that the, uh, hearing be brought. I'm making a motion that the hearing be brought to a close because they were struck. Well, they, they withdrew their application, so it's no longer.
Is there some source where I can say? Emphasis a good idea.
Got into the merits of the matter.
Is there like petition I can?
Have the agency that's gone so then forward with, it's nothing to be discussed.
Second thing, this is second shit without a kitchen. But without the kitchen.
I.
Very different opinion in this board.
Thank you.
And my plan is. So that's why I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah. In accordance with N V L chapter forty A, section ten, a public hearing will be held on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four in Mendon Town Hall at six P M for a variant regarding ten Applewood Lane. The petitioner is seeking relief for a portion of fence which is greater than six feet tall due to the grading of the land. Someone here from the applicant.
Kind of anxiety watching all those.
Please identify yourselves.
My name is Shawna Holt and.
First name?
Shawna. S H A U N A. Um, so I applied for a permit for a fence a while back, um, after speaking with multiple fence companies, um, and getting estimates for the fence where my property is, it, um, downgrades to the detention pond for the street. So there's a grade drop off on my property that trips down to the detention pond. So they had suggested, uh, due to the grading, um, in order to provide adequate coverage and kind of consistency along the fence that when it slopes down, go up to an eight foot section. So I submitted the application online, um, and got the, when I got the approval, like the, the application was done, I thought that was my approval approval. So the fence is in, um, and then months later I got the note that I needed a variance because it was in a certain, um, distance between the property lines of my neighbor and mine. I did not include in the package that I gave you. I have pictures of it. Um, if you want to see the, um, grade, if it helps.
Hundred and twenty eight feet, is that the fence in question, the dark foot line? I'm looking at this.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
This plan here, is that? Just a plan?
Yep, but there's a, yeah, it's only a section of that.
It's a section.
Yeah, so let me give you these. So it's this section, I'm looking at. So it starts at six feet, so. You can see in the back. It goes up and then it slopes back down, right? Kind of hard to tell from the pictures of the grade. I put a ladder in my lawn. I'm sorry? I I'm sorry.
You're showing us a dip in your property.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It grades down from like those, from, I don't know how many feet off the back of the house. It continues to slope down. And then it slopes, it slopes back back to the edge of the property and then it slopes down to the detention pond.
Because of the topography of the.
The basin or?
So it's a detention pond, so yeah.
Well, elevation of the fence isn't really quite, it's just an eight foot fence holding the same elevation.
Correct, so when you, yeah, so it's a, it's like at the, as it continues to slope down, that's where. Yeah, my my property line actually goes through the detention pond. Obviously, doesn't make sense to. Put it through the detention, so I went as like close as I could. To not be on the slope of the hill. The fence company was like, you definitely don't want to put the fence on the slope of the hill. You want to put it down.
Six feet, but on eight feet where it dips down.
Correct. Yeah.
So someplace would be seven feet, eight feet.
Yeah, they did. It's funny, they didn't offer a seven foot. Oh, oh, I thought you said, yeah, 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 yeah. When you see, I, so I share the fence line on the other side. I didn't include a picture, but it's it's six feet. In between the other side of the property and when you're looking in the backyard, even the eight foot side is lower than the six foot side. It wouldn't have worked on the slope because of the grade.
We have a six foot rule. Some places are eight.
Right, right, right. Firm in that.
In that area of the whole fence. That's why we're going with the bearing. Any questions from the audience?
Uh, I'm John Dexega. I live at eight Applewood Lane, which is the property that shares the. Property line with the eighth of fence. Uh, yeah, um, I don't really have, I have a couple of concerns, but I kind of. Do object to the construction of the fence. Uh, I know it's like late now. I thought this process was supposed to occur actually before the fence was built. Um, but I guess I'll just go into like the reasons. Uh, I'm kind of confused still why the eighth of fences required. Like I heard the story about the the slope dipping down. Um, but if that's the case, wouldn't a six, regular six foot fence would have worked if you just put the fence inland more from the property line? Right next to the retention pond? Oh, sorry, I'm saying like, that's much clearer, yes. Uh, so I still don't understand the reason why the fence needs to be eight foot tall. Like I heard the the slope. Uh, and that was the reason the fencing company suggested that. But couldn't the same result be achieved with a six foot fence if it were just placed into the property more and not at the bottom of the slope? And I just, also, I I have objections for the aesthetics being the property that's right next door. Like, it's inconsistent with any other fence in the neighborhood, hence the need for the variance, I guess. Uh, and also, you know, I'm, I may hypothetically put in a fence in the future. And I fear that like, I don't want to put an eight foot fence to to match that. And I feel like it's a little odd having a six foot fence with an eight foot fence right in back of it, just personal opinion, of course. Um, but, yeah, those are my main concerns. And also, the property on the other side of the uh. Uh, sorry, the uh, the property line on the other side of the house is, it's all six feet too, so it's, it's not really consistent.
Um, it should, it should be in the documents that, the plan documents that were sent over as part of the application. Yeah, I submitted the plan from Colonial Fed, okay. Um, I I would like to, if I can, address you guys. I had a conversation with John before putting this in. Because the fence companies, all of them said I would require approval from my neighbor to do an eight foot section, so I wanted to make sure he was on board before I did it. We had the conversation. He's like, oh, I might want to do a fence too. What are you thinking of doing? So we had a full on conversation about it. I told him exactly where I wanted to slope to the eight foot where it dropped, that I needed his approval. He said, can I see the names of the fence companies? Because I might want to do something and where would it connect? Um, you know, I want to see, understand it. So I sent him the fence companies. I told him what I was doing. He responded the next day and said, you know, I'm going to hold off. Go ahead and do what you were planning on doing. So I did. And when the note for the variance came along, he said, you know what? I'm going to oppose it. You never talked about it with me. And I would never have done it without his approval. And the eight foot section starts right in front of the detention pond. Partially because I didn't want to impact his yard and also because that's where it slopes down more.
I have a response to that as well. If, if I may. Yeah, so I remember the conversation where Shawna, it was between yards. She mentioned she was going to get like an eight foot fence. Honestly, this is my first variance experience, first time single family homeowner. So never been through this before, so I didn't even know I had a say in the matter. Uh, she's mentioned she was getting an eight foot fence. I was like, okay, uh, wasn't really asking, it was more like stating that.
No, I asked. I asked for your permission, John. I would never have done it without asking for your permission.
Well, whatever, that's your recollection, I guess. Uh, I recall it differently. And so, yeah, you know, as a neighbor, I just kind of heard around and in the moment, I was like, okay, like. What else am I going to say? I'm not, I'm going to say like, no, you can't do it. Um, but then I learned when I got the, she mentioned it was going to be, I'm sorry. She mentioned there was going to be a hearing a short time ago, I think like a few weeks back. And and then it came to my attention that I actually could formally voice an objection, so. That's the reason I'm doing it now. Uh, this is the first opportunity I've really had to do so uh in a formal setting.
Schmidt, I live across the street at seven Applewood Lane. Um, I can see both of their properties. I'm directly across from Jonathan. I'm diagonally across from Shawna. They both have beautiful properties. Shawna's, the way Shawna's land slopes, I can see from my bedroom and I can see from my parents' room. Because my parents live with us, but we weren't going to get into that with the last thing that was just in front of y'all. The way Shawna's land slopes from what I can see. Where her six foot fences and then it goes down to where the eight foot fences, you can't see a difference.
I understand the elevation.
Where the elevation changes. So in order for her to maintain the privacy that she rightfully has every right to. You would need a, you would need a larger, higher section of fence because the land slopes down. So I, as a neighbor across the street, have no issue with it. Do I want issues with my neighbors? Absolutely not.
Me neither.
You know, I think she did it in a very tasteful way. Um, and I can understand the question of why would you put an eight foot section on that side versus the other side of your property? The other side of the property is flat between her and the other neighbor. So you wouldn't need an eight foot section to have that privacy. On the other side, however, you do need it because it slopes down. So that's, those are just my two cents.
My quick comment to that is, I still don't understand what the need for the eighth of fence is across that section because. There's privacy from what? There's no other house back there. It's a retention pond.
While I understand that, if she has her property, she can put her fence where she wants to put her.
Of course, but if it's an eight foot fence.
Summize the amount of space in her backyard. I would put it as close to my property line as possible.
Sure.
Therefore, if the land slopes down, you need a higher fence in that area.
Right, right. I get it. And she can do whatever she wants with the property within the regulations and the confines. Like, I'm just, this is the form where I can object.
If you're six foot or an eight foot fence.
Yeah.
Right. Right, correct, exactly, yeah. That's, that's my contention is. Yeah, I don't know how long it's.
I I can't tell. Six foot, sixteen feet. Eight foot. That's the gate. By the gate. Oh, is it by the gate? It showed.
So, yeah, it's, it's six foot across the front and then six foot back. Yeah.
So is it ten sections of? It's in the middle of those two darker spots, right?
Um, can I see what you're looking at? Yeah.
Yep, it goes, it's probably right around there. So, yeah, there might be two sections. So it's six feet. There's probably one, two, three, four. It's either the fifth or one back where it drops down.
One, two, three, four, five sections that.
Yeah, that's six.
Sixty feet.
Yeah.
Yep, the sixty feet of eight foot in the dip. And that. And just, so you're averse to that and?
Uh, well, one, I just find it awkward, like looking uh from an aesthetic standpoint, I, you know, whatever. Um, two, I, if I were to put in a fence, which is a possibility, uh, we've actually had that, as you mentioned, a conversation about. Actually, in the context of what you mentioned, it was adjoining the fences together, but anyway. Uh, and I feel like if there's an eighth of fence right in the back of it, either I feel like obligated, like I also have to do an eight foot fence to like match that. Or if I put a six foot fence in, I I feel it's going to look a little weird, you know, having an eighth of fence in back of it kind of thing. I also feel like there's other alternatives, not to loop back to the whole why the eight foot fence conversation, but like. You know, you could put shrubs in front of the fence for privacy and then you don't even have to touch a variance for the fence. It could be six feet and you get that additional privacy if you want.
You, so you're talking about in the basin?
Well, well, I don't know these, I'm not his landscaper. I'm just saying like in front of the fence.
The fence located within the detention basin.
I don't know.
It's on the slope down to it, yeah.
So you couldn't.
It's where the flat.
Yeah, you're not in the base.
No, it's not in it, no.
On the top of the base, you're you're on the upside of the basin.
So, yeah, so the detention pond, like it comes off and then right before it's. Right before it slopes up, slopes back up, that's where the fence is. So there's no plant, you couldn't plant there. Yeah.
Is the open side of the basin with on on your property?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I see. So now I get your point on the other side.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking you would have to have an eight foot to be, but you can't plant within the basin.
I'm not saying within the basin necessarily, like at the top of the slope.
Well, because it's.
The top of the slope is thirty feet into my property.
That was, that wasn't my decision. I I'm just saying, I'm trying to throw out ideas here.
That's, that's.
Yeah, as is, I understand that probably would be a heavy lift or difficult, like, but, you know. Yeah, it was kind of like an eight foot fence without a variance, yeah.
Transitional piece that you could do.
I, there's one in the picture. I have one.
Yeah.
She has one.
But like if you were going to propose a fence, like you could transition down to a.
Yeah.
You can static figure desiring maybe.
Yeah, um, and also like, isn't the variance supposed to be obtained before the fence is constructed? Just like general little thumb?
It was, yeah, I I submitted everything in advance and I said, what do I need to do to submit this? I want an eight foot section and I got the response back. Fill out all this information on the portal, so I filled out the information in the portal, went through the process and then I got, you know. It's, it's, it's been, you know, it's completed, it's approved, here's your, here's how much you owe, and so I paid it. And then a month later, they, or three weeks later, they came, I thought it was done.
So it was approved without a hearing?
Well, it wasn't, it was, there was no hearing required because it was approved likely as a six.
Right.
As a six offensive approved. Yeah.
Contractor made a decision to put.
No, 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 I submitted the permit in advance with the eight foot section planned in it. It was in the permit. They should have, yeah, yeah. Yeah, not, not you. They, they had all of the, it was from the start.
So it sounds like the building department.
It was, it was, it was a mistake.
Yeah.
And, but, I mean, we can rectify that mistake tonight.
They've asked us to rectify it again.
If that's something we'd like to do.
So I guess, well, to maybe speak to a point you're trying to get to is, I don't think there's any ill will or malintention.
Oh, I don't, I'm not saying there was ill will or malintention. For whatever reason, I don't know the details. I was just curious why that happened.
If we were to decide to not approve this variance, they'd have to redo the fence.
Yeah.
But.
That's what, yeah. Okay, that makes more sense to me, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Not malicious mistake. Do we have any other comments from the audience?
I'm Lynn Lamar and I live at seven Applewood Lane with our daughter and um. I love our neighbors, both of them. And I'm really sorry that we even have to be here this evening. Both their properties are beautiful. And when I look out my window and I see both their properties. I'm not seeing it from Jonathan's point of view, but seeing it from where we are. And it looks perfectly fine and I understand why it was done because of the lay of the land. And personally, if it were me, I would have put in a request for a ten foot fence because you got this. All the school buses behind. So Jonathan, if you're going to put up a fence.
Wait, there's already a six foot fence in that spot.
You could put up a bigger one. But anyway, that's my two cents and um. I just hope we can come to an amicable agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
That being said, I I'm comfortable making a motion to approve this variance due to the topography of the land. Um, making a necessity. I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too, it's a great neighborhood.
Tom and I have been discussing kind of some housekeeping stuff behind the scenes here. A work of tightening up our our process so that. Challenge, if you'll return.
Yeah.
Some of it's unavoidable, I guess. We do the best we can.
Molly, are you here?
I couldn't tell. Is he like muted or?
You're muted, but.
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Just want to make sure you're in this discussion.
You could have helped us out a couple times there, buddy.
I just got on, so I didn't catch, I'm sorry.
We, we, we had it, we had it. So, yeah, I I guess my my question is, um. Do we want to get Karis to weigh in on this at all?
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, I think, point is, we've had a couple, I feel like these appeals are increasing.
Yeah.
Because like they never used to. At least I didn't, don't recall so many appeals being.
I was surprised to see.
Or so many of our decisions being appealed. And well, there's, there's other, there is the, there is the decision we uh made. With the billing inspector's decision over on, that that was brought, and there was the. Farm, there's, there was um the, there was the garage over on, on Experts Road, so. I just want to make sure that we're. I have a set of guidelines so that when.
Yeah.
These get brought there, like our our decisions are pretty.
At least we have some basis.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, like when I wrote the last decision, I was like, shut up. Yeah, like when I wrote the last decision, I was like, got up.
Sorry, I, I'm just having trouble hearing you. So if I interrupt you, I apologize. What I, one item I would maybe bring up is that. If there's nobody that's contesting a decision that's being brought to us. You know, it's, it's probably in, you know, again, what, whether we're, you know, again, we make decisions kind of based on, on. On, you know, what looks right or what. But I do understand that some of these are, when they're getting contested, that we're having. An issue because they're, the appeals are being, are going through. If we have one that's highly contested or we are concerned about it, we could also, we don't have to make the decision right there every night. I know we don't like to hold anybody up. I definitely don't. Uh, but we could take it under advisement and maybe add another meeting. Uh, and then, and, and then get with counsel.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Molly. Also, you know, um. Something I, I've asked that we do in the past, that I think we're, we've, we've started doing more. Is that when we make the motion to approve a decision, we specifically highlight what. Which, um, elements that meets qualify for variance. Cause that's what I, I know some of the appeal, appeals bring up is, oh, well, you know, what's the hardship? Well, if we state what the hardship that we're bringing the variance for is, that kind of defends our decisions.
Record.
Yeah, it's on the record. It's, it's clear. You know.
We'll say that a few of these are pretty unique and.
Absolutely. I mean, it's something like, it's something that's kind of like, it's like. Yeah, I mean, it is an hardship, but which like, which, which, which are the elements is and, and.
Yeah. Even this, this, this building code thing, I.
Well, that, that's why we, we told them, we think it's a building code to bring it up with.
I think I just didn't want to read the document that was clearly.
Right, right. I mean, I mean, that's the case that they withdrew their application and. It is a gun line. I guess I would ask to say when we do make a decision, if we highlight which.
Yeah.
Which the elements it.
Maybe could even do kind of a simplified version with almost like a little bit of a, a worksheet for decision.
Yeah, right, right. So it's kind of like a.
I, I'm reading it like based on topography circle.
That would be a good idea. Like kind of like, um. Like when you sign it, may, maybe there'd be something to, and again, I think also like getting Karis to weigh on, on this would be important because.
I mean, most of that's really just forty, just the forty.
Yeah, right. Exactly. And I, I. I do, um. I do want.
Go around to everybody?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, and this is not my, I, I just did a little wordsmith thing, but it really was something that was out on the internet and I just cleaned it up.
It looks great. It looks great to me.
Yeah. No, just simplify. Gives us some guidance.
Yeah.
And as we, as we make decisions, we could, this document should evolve with referencing. Remember we did this and you know, here's the precedent. Cause each one of these seems to be a little bit more unique lately.
Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of use from our. From our process.
Yeah.
A lot, I, I've noticed a lot more people are challenging the billing commissioner that we, I never used to.
Yeah, I see those, but you know, it's, it's definitely something that's been happening more and more and. You know. But I would not have voted to overturn his.
No, I, 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 I don't, I do not believe I would have either.
So just a, just a quick note on that too. So we're also seeing changes to the building code. That are excessive and in my opinion ridiculous. So that's, that there, when these changes come into play. People obviously are used to what it used to be like. And you know, I don't know specifically in this one, if that's the case, but when, you know, we, with the building inspectors in the know. Cause he's constantly getting the new information. But I gotta tell you, some of the stuff that's coming down the pike is just ridiculous for homeowners. And it's just going to drive up the cost of houses. But that's, that's another argument.
Good for you.
But, yeah, I, I think overall that's good. I would like to get Karis to weigh in.
It'd be good.
On it.
Might even have some.
That the idea of the kind of template.
Yeah.
That, and when we make decisions, we check off which element. And, and we have a little spot for notes to maybe add on to it.
Yeah.
I, I like that idea a lot.
Just, yeah, it takes the, you know, we're in here in the heat of the moment and we might forget something and.
Yeah, no, I agree. It kind of, it kind of brings it down to like, this is why we're deciding this and this is, and you know, in that way, like. And they say, well, what, what, what was the hardship? Well, actually it says it right on this document.
Yeah, great. And I, I tried to do research on these things. Like just when I, I talked.
I mean, I would like, um. I was always under the impression that our bylaw did not allow for use variants. And I did look into, it says, it says, um, exceptional uses, but I, I.
Not use.
Yeah, like I, I just, I, I mean, if, if we can, we can. I just, I was always under the impression we couldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mendon's, Mendon's actually one of the only towns that allows use variances.
Okay.
Okay, so they do. Okay. Well, it's.
Well, make sure you confirm that. I, I, that's the way I understood it anyway. So make sure.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I maybe get Karis to get a definitive answer on that too. Because I was always under the impression we couldn't, but.
Um, well, to the extent that it's allowed.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's the issue, right?
Right. To the extent that it's, you know, I.
Actually it allowed use.
And that loud use. And I didn't think we could basically change the use of. Property, but. What, what was it?
Prewriting all the bylaws.
Is there, uh, so should we be addressing the in-law apartment?
Well, I think, so I think, yeah, isn't that, isn't that what it's? I thought they were going to add an ADUs is one thing they were looking at. Is that right, John?
Yeah, some. Yeah, Billy got grant, Billy got.
Yeah, so what they may want to do might, might become.
My PC.
Maybe it's a special permit under the ZBA versus.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I feel for, I feel for what they're trying to do, but.
Sure.
Yeah, I understand. Maybe I would like to get Karis's permission on, or, or not permission, but like just to weigh in on both the guidelines. And also on whether or not we, we as a board can grant use their finances.
Yep, that'd be good to know.
Cause I just don't want.
We should have adjourned.
So I will second that gladly. Guys, stay, stay, oh, aye. Everybody stay cool.
Thank you.
The best you can.
Good meeting, everyone.
Meeting.